Five or three, two, one.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to February four, twenty twenty-one. Goal-setting workshop for the city of Brisbane. This is a city council special meeting agenda. It is Thursday. Thursday, it's Thursday, February fourth, twenty twenty-one. City clerk, please read the preamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This meeting is compliant with the governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty issued on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, allowing for deviation of to the conference rules required by the background. The purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. Council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Public meeting videos. Members of the public may view the city council meetings by logging into the Zoom webinar with the information I'll provide below. City council meetings can also be viewed live and or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/brisbaneca or on Comcast Channel twenty-seven. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website at brisbaneca.org/meetings. To address the council, members of the public may be the city council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar. The city council meeting will be an exclusively virtual. The city council agenda materials may be viewed online at www.brisbaneca.org at least twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting and at least seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comment in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting, and public comments received will be read into into the record during the item. Email ipad at brisbaneca.org. Text six-two-eight-two-one-nine-two-nine-two-two. Join the Zoom webinar at nine-seven-nine-six-eight-zero-three-one-nine-four-three with the passcode one-two-three-four-five-six and the call-in number one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-one-two-eight. All attendees using this webinar feature are muted by default to speak. Press the raise your hand icon and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If you're joining us via telephone to indicate you want to provide public comment, press star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, please state your name and provide your comments. You can also provide your comment using the Q and A function in the webinar. And for special assistance, please contact the city clerk at forward five-five-zero-eight-two-one-one-three. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting.
Thank you. I apologize for our late start. If we could have a report out from our closed session. Tom, either.
There are same problems before the connections we. During closed session, the council took up the one item on the housing authority agenda and gave direction to staff on how to proceed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry for the inconvenience.
No problem. Thanks, Tom. So, item one, seven fifty called order. That's okay. The can, item two, consent calendar items. Item A, adopt resolutions number twenty-twenty-one through oh-four through twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine to appoint members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Public Arts Committee, Complete Street Safety Committee, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee.
I'd like to pull the consent item A.
Okay.
And and the reason why I'll just dive right in is that on the appointments for the Open Space and Ecology Committee for a shortened term through January twenty-twenty-two, that's giving them less than one year on that, and our application process said for two years. So I would like to make it for a two-year appointment if that's possible.
Okay.
I may?
Yes, please.
The the actual posting was from was for a shortened term through January twenty-twenty-two. It was a I think we just misspoke because we had posted the the terms for, you know, since last year, so it was technically a two-year term. But since it took a year to actually make the appointments, it got, it was, you know, it was really just a shortened shortened term for one year.
Is it possible for us to make that a two-year term? I think that with someone new coming in, it's hard to even get up to speed in the first eleven months, and it really isn't even a two-year or a one-year term at this point. And I think that it would be better to be a term through January twenty-three.
That means we have to interview again and.
Well, if if I may, can we get a comment from either Clay or Tom? Because typically, if we have an administrative issue, we can rectify that. And we do not have to re-interview people who have already been appointed. In the past, we have just reappointed people without interviews, if that is our desire. But I will defer to Clay or Tom to how to rectify this, please.
You you could, you could do it that way. Yeah, I mean, the the city clerk is is correct. We, this is a two-year appointment. It's just that it took a year to get the the appointment process in up to gear. So we could, you know, I mean, I I think the cleanest way to make sure your kind of appointment rotation stays in place is to come at the end of the year and do at the, Ingrid, at that point, it would, the next upping would be like for a four-year appointment, right?
Correct. It's because this is for the replacement of the committee members who had resigned and their terms ended in twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, if if you if you were to do two years tonight, then we would just have kind of a.
A mess. I believe, I believe that part of the bylaws, current, the current.
Yeah, so I mean, my my recommendation would be just go ahead with the appointment as you've done it tonight. We'll come back at the end of the year, and then if you if you want to, at that point, say, look at these folks have only had one year. We don't really need to pre-interview them. We're just going to reappoint them. You can, you could do that. You've done something similar to that in the past.
Okay, and and if I may, just so the public knows, we never appoint, we have never in the history of Brisbane appointed people to committees or commissions, but we have reappointed them in in the past, and I I don't have the details of that, but so it is.
See without interviews?
With with no interviews. So if people are already on a committee, we can just reappoint. So to keep it clean, if that's okay, Terry, that we proceed in that manner. I think that would be the cleanest way for us to do it, and I certainly do not want to think that we've got new people who have just been appointed that think they're going to be re-interviewed in a year, because that would not be okay.
But legally, don't you have to notice it and allow other community members to apply? So there could be somebody else that applies, and we would, in all fairness, need to interview everyone.
Well, you know, rather than trying to figure this out tonight, let maybe the city attorney and city clerk and I can get together and get some information out to you in terms of what your options are at the end of the year.
I think my my big thing is that Glenn had mentioned that she was going to be retiring and moving and that she saw that happening, two years being the right amount of time, but four years being too much. So if we do a one-year appointment now and we go to extend her, well, now that term is now four years, and that's no longer fits in her timeline anymore. So that's, that's like another, another thing that's kind of weird about this, because she was going and thinking it's two, but it's really going to be one and then four if we decide to reappoint, which is well overheard for time allotment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
So legally, you you've got three issues here. You have the disclosure of two that these were two-year terms and it turns out not to be two-year terms is an administrative mistake and in particularly in this time with the pandemic. Anybody trying to enforce that in court is going to probably have a very angry judge.
Tom, can I, can I jump in here for a second? It it wasn't an administrative mistake. It was posted correctly and announced correctly. I think what happened is that when we did the interviews last week, we were referring to it as two years, when it, when it's, it is technically a two-year appointment. It's just, there's only one year left, but in terms of how it was posted by the city clerk in the communication from the city clerk, that was all, all accurate. So there was no administrative mistake.
Let me, let me finish here, because I, well, we'll leave it there. The the terms, you are finishing terms that are provided for in the Brisbane code, and therefore you have to stick to those terms unless you notice a meeting and you changed the the code through the normal channels, et cetera. So you couldn't do it tonight anyway. And you can't do it the next meeting, the way the the rules need to be applied. So you'd have to notice it, propose an amendment, put it before the the public, take it up a second time, et cetera. And that gets me to the third point. The, at the end of the day, there is nothing that requires you to say tonight we will guarantee a reappointment or not. You can just know that the the sense of the council is we don't want to have asked people to do it to your term, and because of the pandemic and delays, have them only serve nine months, but we'll revisit it in the, in the fall, as is the normal way, and decide then, as the city manager said, decide then what your options are, and we can provide the options sooner, but you're juggling three different things. My point, Madam Clerk, on the administrative error was simply to say that if somebody read it today, they wouldn't have the full context. That's what I was getting at. But no judge would. A judge would be angry if they tried to argue to them that you were wasting the court's time.
And then, if I may, Madam Mayor, you know, we have people who you know, who we appoint, and then, for whatever reason, they have to leave. Just because they're on a advisory body doesn't mean that they are obligated to stay, right? So if, say, if Glenn wanted to leave after a couple of years, if we did appoint her to a four-year term, she 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 could do that, and she's already put in so much, you know, valuable time to this community on that body. You know, that that that's also an option, too.
But tonight, you have not noticed. What what's noticed is a routine, you know, two-year appointments, we're filling them out. They were noticed properly that way. The only possible error is a misunderstanding by somebody reading it currently as opposed to somebody reading the the record. Again, there's not going to be a legal issue there. Nobody's gonna as I said, it would anger people. I think you need to act tonight or not on what's before you. This is, this is too material of a change not to have noticed it in advance. And I do, same manager, I now understand what you were referring to. Yes, legally, they are two-year terms. You're right. They were always said to be two-year terms. I meant that they may have been misspread by somebody reading today. I get your point, though. You're right. Legally, that's right.
All right, I'll make a motion, if that's okay, to adopt resolutions number twenty-twenty-one through oh-four. Oh, excuse me, numbers twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash oh-four through twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen.
I will second that.
Call vote. Councilmember Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember Lance?
Hi.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Cunningham?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. I I'm really sorry for the confusion, too. I mean, you know, this last year has had so many curveballs thrown at us that I'm just so impressed that everybody's basically on the same page. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our item three, our goal-setting workshop. We'll start with item B, the twenty-twenty year-end summary, and then we'll get into item C, the goal-setting workshop. Clay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to start off with the, a little presentation on kind of reminding us all the things that we've done through the the past year. And Caroline has put together a presentation on that, so I'm going to turn it over to her, and she'll make the presentation. If there's any questions that the council members have with regards to what's being presented or additional information, we can, we've got all the department heads here tonight, so we can certainly answer any of the questions that might come up.
Thank you, Clay. I'm going to share my screen. Can you all see the twenty-twenty highlights?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great, so, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I had the pleasure of presenting at the start of your goal-setting workshop, a look back at anything but ordinary year. Twenty-twenty seemed to start like any, any other normal year, but on March thirteenth, just to set the tone, representatives from the Chamber, the City, and the Lions Club, as Councilmember Lance Davis, the city manager, deputy city manager, myself, Dan Carter, John Maza, Sharon Boggs, and her pup got together to discuss setting up the Brisbane COVID-nineteen Response Coalition to make sure that no Brisbane residents fell through the cracks. The Village Helping Hands would also get involved and volunteer their time taking down messages for residents needing assistance, getting groceries, a ride to their doctors. The BRCRC is still assisting residents and was one of the first, if not the first, to be implemented of its kind in the county. And we all know that on Monday, March sixteenth, that was the date of the Bay Area's first shelter-in-place order, which changed the trajectory of the year, how we did our work, and how we would serve the community. I just wanted to provide that example, because that really sets the tone for the rest of the presentation and how the partnerships were formed at the onset to carry us through the year. So, going into the twenty-twenty highlights, they're categorized here by council-adopted values. So you can see what was still able to happen in an anything-but-ordinary year. So let's get started with the first value, or using the terminology of priority-based budgeting, the first result, safe community. So, a safe community is that residents and visitors will experience a sense of safety. This police department completed a technology upgrade of their mobile car computers, which now allows officers to write the reports in their vehicles, thus spending more time visible out in the community than in the station. Officers attended and prepared an operation plan in partnership with the event coordinators for a Black Lives Matter peaceful demonstration event at the community park to ensure safety for all attendees, which was well-attended and very peaceful. Police and fire sent me, sent personnel and mutual aid requests to the multiple major wild incidents throughout California to assist with residential evacuations and structure protection. North County Fire Authority updated the evacuation plan for Brisbane, as well as coordinated with the county on moving forward with an online county-wide electronic platform slated to be operational in twenty-twenty-one. Firefighters continued safety inspections of land parcels throughout the Vegetation Abatement and Management Program, as well as completed annual life safety and fire code-compliant inspections and planned check reviews. The Department of Public Works, now on referred to as DPW, finished the water main replacement project phase two, improving fire flow and water pressure for the upper streets of Kings, Margaret, Paul, and Harold. TBW, TPW installed a retaining wall on the four-hundred block of Kings, mitigating concerns for a failing slope. This work was completed on December third, just ahead of the winter rains. And TPW also made safety improvements on Gonaupi Canyon Parkway, which included modified striping plans and added rumble strips to prevent shoulder runoffs and median head-on accidents. As part of the Safe Routes to Schools project, DPW oversaw improvements along the city's official walk routes, which were chosen based on sidewalk clearance, visibility, and observed walking trends. The improvements included new curb ramps, restriping intersections with high-visibility piano-key-style crosswalks, adding related signage, and inserting wayfinding markers along the walk route to schools. The walk routes are intended to provide designated routes for students, families, and other pedestrians to get around central Brisbane on foot as safely and comfortably as possible. On several street segments near PES and Littman, a new fifteen-per-hour speed limit will be in effect only when children are present at the start and end of the school day. And now we're going to move on to community building, which is that Brisbane will honor the rich diversity of our city, which are residents, organizations, and businesses through community engagement and participation. Brisbane Parks and Recreation Department was one of the very first agencies in the county and state to launch their virtual recreation platform in response to the pandemic. The Smile Brisbane campaign sought to achieve much more than online class resources and activity ideas for Brisbane residents. Smile Brisbane is an initiative focused on continued service to residents intending to combat social isolation, engage with community, address food insecurity, support community health and wellness, and unify residents during this trying time. The Parks and Recreation Department has received two awards from the California Parks and Recreation Society for the Smile Brisbane Campaign and their solidarity poster series. Nine city events and programs were reimagined last year so that they could be experienced safely while also bringing a semblance of normalcy to committee members, as well as share important resources. They were senior lunches, where with the help of the Lions Club and Samaritan House, were distributed not just once, but twice a week via drive-through pickup and delivery to those that needed assistance. And that persists today. The Luna Fest Film Festival, which was held virtually, raised more than twenty-four thousand dollars, and thirteen young women pursuing careers in male-dominated fields were awarded scholarships by the Brisbane Lions Club, a key event partner with twenty-twenty being no different. Three, a socially-distanced Easter egg hunt, where paper eggs were posted up around town and a map was provided for those hunting. Successful hunters took a photo with the eggs and tagged us using the hashtag Smile Brisbane. Four, the city's traditional fire hydrant painting and restoration event, which was moved to the fall, allowed residents the opportunity to participate in a socially-distanced event while flexing their creativity muscles and sprucing up some hydrants. Five, during October, which is Fire Prevention Month, crews with communications staff recorded a series of storytime at Station eighty-one videos, where in lieu of in-person tours and the NCFA Fire Service Day or Annual Open House Event, crews read stories, provided safety tips, and had the fire engine on display. Six, as part of Spooktober, treat bags were prepared and distributed during a farmer's market with the cornhole board set up near the gazebo. Players were provided with their own beanbags to toss and take home. Seven, the Veterans Day fly-raising ceremony was livestreamed from the park with former council member Clark Conway on site, along with our officers and a handful of community members. Eight, a library dedication ceremony was held and also livestreamed from the new one-six-three visitation site, where the full city council, as well as county supervisor David Canapa and former supervisor Adrian Tissia were in attendance for the special occasion. And lastly, the Festival of Lights was recorded using several mobile devices and streamed via Zoom on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Channel twenty-seven. It included a car light parade through town for residents to take in from the safety of their homes, along with the traditional tree lighting by volunteers of the year Vicky Lewis, Joseline Mayer-O'Connell, North Pole Parcels for Purchase, which sold out, a virtual visit from Santa and Leanne Borgazy singing all the songs and more that the traditional carolers would have when coming down visitation. And now, IT staff also converted the city to Microsoft or Office three-sixty-five to ensure employees could stay connected off-site and set up a system to ensure that employees can work remotely by providing laptops, cell phones, and log-in connections. At a time when many cities were putting website redesigns on the back burner, we felt that it was crucial for ours to proceed forward, knowing that many residents would be visiting the site for local information and resources concerning the pandemic. Staff completed the redesign in the spring with mini-code for less than fifteen thousand, whose services we happen to be already using for housing the city's municipal code. We now have a more streamlined meeting and agenda management system, mobile-friendly mobile-friendly website, and municipal code library with further cross-enhancements easily possible in the future. Also realizing that we would be conducting virtual meetings well into the year, staff made it a priority to address the background buzzing on Channel twenty-seven. The issue was resolved with staff troubleshooting along with MCTV from the city council chambers. Another item that was able to be upgraded free of cost was the video quality of meetings and events shown on our YouTube channel. We began streaming meetings directly from Zoom to YouTube in the fall, which has allowed for sharper HD quality video without that nascent buzz. The difference can be seen starkly on our YouTube channel, Brisbane CA. Now we'll move on to Fiscally Prudent, which is that Brisbane's fiscal vitality will reflect sound decisions, which also speak to the values of the community. The Finance Department prepared a high-level two-year budget for fiscal years twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, which the council adopted on June fourth, meeting the June thirtieth deadline. The budgets for both the years are balanced within the available resources. Finance staff also tracked expenditures for COVID-nineteen in order to apply for reimbursement from the state and federal government when possible. The city's Community and Development Department, now referred to as CDD, obtained a funding grant for two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand to assist in implementing state housing requirements. DPW also received over two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars from the City and County Association of Governments to help complete the combined Safe Routes to Schools green infrastructure project. More on that in a bit. Thanks for a mix of businesses in town, being more construction-related and businesses that sell products to other businesses, or B-to-B versus businesses that sell finished products and services directly to consumers, or B-to-C, such as shopping malls. Sales tax, which is the city's largest revenue source, is up about one million more than what the finance director would have anticipated. And as a direct result of COVID, Brisbane became a larger percentage of the county's overall sales tax collection. Normally, we're about three percent of the county's overall sales tax, but in recent quarters, we've been closer to five to six percent. Another area we've been doing better is in property tax, where the city is up four-hundred thousand dollars more than what was anticipated due to the new construction happening at Sierra Point. Staff was very conservative, conservative in making their projections and hadn't projected any increases in this area due to not being sure how COVID would affect property taxes. You're probably aware that property taxes get paid to a variety of agencies, of which the city is one. We receive approximately twenty percent of the property tax paid for on a house. With construction being deemed an essential business, it was able to be continued after just a short delay at the start of the pandemic, with the healthcare campuses coming along nicely, as you may have noticed, when visiting in the Brisbane arena. Okay, ecological sustainability. Said Brisbane will be a leader in setting policies and practicing service-delivery innovations that promote ecological sustainability. Case in point, is that the city received a Reach Code Award for Innovation from Sustainable Samhita County for adoption of local green building codes, allowing for safer and more comfortable buildings, increased EV charging infrastructure, and reduced emissions. The Open Space and Ecology Committee hosted Brisbane's first recycled arts and crafts contest. Nearly thirty committee members submitted their projects, highlighting reuse opportunities and demonstrating that one man's treasure, one man's treasure can truly be another's. One man's trash can truly be another man's treasure. As part of the Safe Routes to Schools project was a green infrastructure component. This included implementing fire-retention basins or bioswale that use native and drought-tolerant plants to help treat stormwater. These basins were installed at various locations along the walk routes and serve a dual purpose. Stormwater capture and flood prevention, as well as safer intersections by way of the bulbous, which provide for safer crossings and greater visibility into the intersections used frequently for walking to school. A mature bioswale can be seen at City Hall, where adjacent to the parking lot is one of the county's first demonstration projects, which is also shown here. And TPW began the implementation phase of the Brisbane Building Efficiency Program, which was created in twenty-nineteen to help make local buildings more energy and water-efficient, as well as curb emissions driving climate change. Most owners owners of local buildings, ten thousand square feet or more, must benchmark their building and report results to the city annually, starting May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Byright Food Service Distributors became the first building to do so in November of last year by completing their compliance effort. The Balens continues to be a major project of the city. We work diligently. We worked diligently throughout the year safeguarding the city's position on environmental and legal issues, including all aspects of density, cleanup remediation and the financial impacts of growth. The city's comments on the draft feasibility study or remedial action plan for OU2 and OUSM were submitted to the State Water Board and Department of Toxic Substances Control as part of the agency's public comment period for the plans and can be found on our website. The city also firmly opposed the California High Speed Rail Authority's proposal to locate a rail yard in Brisbane, providing extensive comments, as did many of our citizens and other groups. We are waiting now for those comments to be addressed in any final EIR and planning documents by the authority. The city's full response can also be found on our website, brisbaneca.org. And lastly, economic development. Brisbane will work with the businesses and residents to provide for economic vitality and diversity. The Community Development Department implemented and enhanced and expanded range of online customer services, including planning submittals and building permit processing from the city's new website. With Health Peaks, the shore nearing completion on Sierra Point Parkway, DPW is overseeing project compliance, including their design and installation of offsite improvements such as a new sewer line in Sierra Point Parkway and Sewer List Station number four. With Phase 3's Genesis Marina Project breaking ground at nearby 3500 Marina Boulevard, DPW and CDD staff confirmed that the project complies with requirements of the Development Agreement and mitigation and monitoring reporting plan. Out at 501 Tunnel, DPW participated in a bi-county review of the planned major remodel at the Recology Facility. And lastly, the city continues to subsidize T3, a community-led group, for the purchase of supplies from Brisbane Hardware for all their beautification efforts done along our downtown drag visitation app, whose holiday decorations brought a lot of joy and cheer to our local restaurants, businesses, as well as committee members. So that concludes my presentation of the 2020 highlights, which I hope helps you, the city council, and those watching to see a bit more of how we've been keeping plenty busy. And if you wanted to delve deeper, they're also in your pocket and on the website as lists grouped by department. So there's more that you can look at there. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or turn it over to Clay for your next portion of the evening's agenda.
Thank you, Caroline. You're amazing. Thank you so much. Any questions for Caroline before we move on? No?
Adam Mayor, we have a raised hand from Linda Detmer.
Please go ahead.
Okay, I need to promote her to panelist in order for her to be able to.
Linda, you need to unmute yourself. I see you now, but you're muted.
Yeah, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to make a comment or should I wait until public comments?
About what?
The stuff that was just discussed by Caroline.
That was a lot of stuff. Anything in particular?
Complete Streets.
Adam Mayor, it'd probably be best to just wait until it's adjourned for the next, once it's all presented. So I believe the city manager is.
If you wouldn't mind, Linda, we're gonna wait for this, okay?
It would be fine.
Thank you so much.
Colleen looked like she had her hand raised to say something.
This, just so you guys know, I can only see so many people on this screen. So, and Colleen, I don't see your hand raised. Can you use for this new format, on the bottom of your screen, there's a hand raised little yellow thingy? Because if you, now I can see it. Okay. All right. Thanks, Colleen. Go. And if ever, everybody would please be patient. This is a new format and if I screw up, don't kill me. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Colleen.
Those raised hands are hard to see, by the way.
Yeah.
I was just gonna point out, interesting, thank you Caroline for the presentation, that I didn't hear mention, it's funny that Linda's in here, I didn't hear mention of Complete Streets. And I just wanted to point out that all of that about the safe route, it's not just the route, when you talked about crosswalks, signage, markers, curb ramps, and even the speed limits, that was all of their work. And I didn't hear mention of their committee and I think they deserve that recognition. So I just wanna put in the word there. That's a lot of hours of work that all of those improvements came about. And that's the cat in the background echoing the same as what I just said.
Thank you. Do I see any more raised hands for comments?
I think we'll wait until public comment for the public.
Okay, I. So. I see nothing here. Right, okay, so this is new to me. So we're moving on. Now, Ingrid, you need to help me out here. This is, this is new.
Adam Mayor, we're going into the council goal setting portion of the meeting.
Okay, all right, so, okay, because I didn't see the other. Thank you. So we're moving on now to the goal setting workshop. Item C, council goal setting. Item I, 2021 goal setting.
Okay, I think Ingrid, we're gonna put something up on the screen.
Can you see the goal setting list of projects?
Yes, I can.
So we've listed out a number of projects or items that we know will be coming forward to the council in some fashion in the, in the next year. And they're kind of somewhat of a kind of a hodgepodge of different items and stuff. So I'll kind of go through those fairly quickly. The whole point of tonight is, you know, you could certainly ask questions about any of these or make suggestions in terms of how we approach them. And then if there's things the council wants to add and it's, it's really just a kind of a to-do list for us throughout the year so that we kind of make sure that we don't miss the things that are important for, to the council members in terms of getting them done and brought forward. So the first one is SB 1383, which is a state bill or wide range of bills to reduce organics and into the waste and landfills. Public Works Department has been working on this. We actually had a subcommittee meeting and got some direction from the subcommittee a couple of weeks ago. And then this will be coming forward to the council, probably late winter, early spring of this year. The second item I put on here with a little bit of hesitation, but I know it's an important item to a couple of council members. And the only hesitation is that we're still working through the tariff issues in terms of what we can do with the polls in terms of the lighting and seeing if we can get the lights up for the, for the holidays. This year, we did kind of a hybrid project. Some volunteers, which included a couple of your council members, got involved and did some mockups for the polls on visitation. And then we had a contractor implement the rest of that. But we are working on that. It's on our radar screen and if we can accomplish, we will, we will do so. The next item was one that was unfortunately really a casualty of COVID-19. We were going to be bringing forward in next, last year's budget or the current year's budget that we're in, but for last year for approval, a series of projects and funding for basically beautification of the community. Everything from reducing weeds, doing more weed pulling to plantings in certain areas. Unfortunately, this all got derailed when we, because of the concerns over the budget. So we're gonna be revaluing this since Caroline got into a little bit with the finances. One of the odd things, I guess, about COVID-19 is that we were really, I think all city local governments were really expecting to get hammered financially when COVID-19 started. The notion of shutting down the economy, I think, was scary on a number of fronts and certainly scary for us in terms of what can our finances. But a number of revenues have come in much, much stronger. So we're in a much better condition than I would have thought we would have been in or Stuart would have thought we would have been last March or April when we were putting together the budget. So I think there is some potential for bringing some of this back to the council for consideration and implementation this year. The next item is the project up in the Lower Acres. The Planning Department had had a couple of meetings before the Planning Commission to identify road plan lines. That's not to build a road, building a road, this comes with the development, if it indeed happens. We've continuously emphasized that there are no applications on file, continues to be the case. But this is a orderly way of planning and getting out in front of some potential issues into the future. So if this is being handled by the Community Development Department, the next phase of this would be to go back to the Planning Commission with some recommendations and, and get some input from them or decisions from them that would come on to the, back to the city council at some point later in the year. The next item is the short-term rental program. As we're all aware, the council adopted an ordinance last year, also gave authority to the staff to sign a contract with host compliance to monitor that. That's in, the contract's in place. We anticipate it to be fully operational in March or April of this year. This will be handled through the Community Development Department. We do have a meeting set up with the subcommittee on a couple of implementation issues and monitoring issues that we will then bring back to the full council for consideration. Hopefully, I'm anticipating that will be a March-April timeframe. The next one also, I am kind of got derailed by the COVID-19. You know, certainly the effects that, that this event has had on any kind of retail and any kind of storefront operations. So this has been put on hold. There is a sub-council subcommittee that has been working on this. We would anticipate getting the committee back again later on in the year to review this and, and then ultimately make recommendations before they come back to the Planning Commission and to the city council. The next item you saw, grading ordinance you saw last fall. And then we did bring it back to the council. We brought to a subcommittee, then we brought it to the council. There is also some input from the Planning Commission. The council requested that we wait until after the new council was in place before we brought it back for consideration. So we will be doing that probably in, I think we may be doing as early as the next meeting, but we'll certainly be doing it within the next month or so. Small lot garage exemption, the council, when they reviewed this issue a few months ago, asked that an update on the ordinance to include a small lot, grant a garage exemption and to provide some data on just how widespread or the ordinance would affect the exclusion. So that will be coming back to you probably in March. The next item is affordable housing strategy. This is really kind of arose from the subcommittee work on this. We, obviously, we've got, you know, issues relative to the Baylands that will be coming on. And I think we want to look through some potential strategies there. We do have a 15% inclusionary ordinance, but we may want to look at that as well as other potential options. The other issue that has kind of been vexing for us over many years is that even though we've had some land available and we have had some interest in trying to do affordable housing projects, what invariably takes place is that the affordable housing nonprofit developers need much greater density than, you know, our community is going to feel comfortable with. So it's been very difficult to find projects of a size that, that would work. So the idea here is that if that's not going to be successful, then maybe come back with some other options for us to consider in terms of, of affordable housing. It could be any array of things. And we've done first time buyer, homebuyer programs before and things of that nature. So there's, we just kind of want to look at the array of options that we have, that we could potentially use. The next item has the utility rate increases for capital projects and operations. This has already been before the council infrastructure subcommittee. Just to refresh everybody's memory, we have been on a program, I think, for over a decade now to every five years do a bond issue for about $5 billion to increase or to raise funds for our water and sewer infrastructure. So we're at the point where we are ready to do that. Again, when we get, when ultimately the city gets to the fourth or fifth cycle of doing this, then we'll be retiring bonds and then bringing in new, new debt. And so there, at some point, the, the level of increase will be very, very minimal. And that's the whole idea is to be able to have a kind of a steady program in terms of our capital projects so that we're getting the work done and we're not having a, a rate shock every few years. Next item has been on your agenda recently and that is the Sierra Point Park planning. We are working in the process of developing a much more robust committee set up with the various committees of the city that might have an interest, such as Parks and Rec, Open Space, Complete Streets, and be bringing on a consultant to help us with the planning and also any interaction that we may ultimately want to have with the UPC Hotel Site. We're anticipating, excuse me, we're anticipating that they will be coming through with, it's not their application, at least some more detailed ideas of what they want to do with the hotel site. So that is a process that's in, in, in action at this point. The last one is the Baylands development. And before I go to that, because we have another whole sheet to review with you there. First of all, I need to get a glass of water, but beyond that, we, it's probably a really good time to take a moment and receive any council input on what we provided you, but also for you to identify items that you would like to get on the list. So with that said, I'll turn it back to the mayor and let the mayor moderate this part of it.
Right.
And I'm just gonna leave the room just for a moment. I'll be right back.
I was trying to offer you a glass. So this is a huge list of things for us to contemplate. I'm, I'm thinking that what would be really prudent for us to do is not try and get down into the weeds in tonight's meeting about any one particular topic here. But just make general comments on how you feel about the overall list of things that, that are here for us to do. You, you know, I'm very conservative relative to, to not putting us in a position to make promises that we might keep. And, and I think that's super important. So if we have a high level overview of all of these topics rather than getting into specifics that we say we're going to do and then at some point in the future we can't do, I think would be a very prudent start to this conversation. So who would like to start? Terry wants to start. I can see it in her face.
Well, not really. I think that, thank you. And I think that Caroline's presentation of our past accomplishments and Clay's synopsis of what is on our plate or proposed to be on our plate was very good. I think that it really hit a lot of the larger projects that we're going to be dealing. Really hit a lot of the larger projects that we're going to be dealing with, um, certainly in a. Big overview rather than what the specifics of each project will be, um, so. Right at this point, I don't have any other projects that I feel need to be added. In a particular sense at this time, but um, I'd love to hear from the rest of the council.
Okay, I'm just going to go across the page since we've now got this, this graphic, I can, I can do numbers, Madison, you're next.
I I feel like this list seems manageable to me, um, I feel like. I don't, I don't think there's anything missing, um, and it all seems to be like stuff. We could conceivably work on this year, so I don't, I'm kind of like Terry, I don't really have anything to add.
Okay, Colleen.
Um, yeah, I I think that the list is formidable enough, um, a couple of things, the holiday lighting and beautification. I I wonder about finances, but that's kind of an ongoing issue we have to address, so um. The rest looks fine, we may have other things that come up, but um, I'd rather stay with what I think is manageable right now, so it's good.
All right, thanks, Cliff.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, yeah, that was a great list, uh, you know, things that we have been talking about, other things that. Have uh, you know, come on our radar, um, I I did provide a list of a few things uh, to Clay this morning. And I guess Clay, those are the things that you were gonna put in on the screen.
Um, I I don't think we have them ready for the screen, but I do, I do have uh, I do have your memo, or not memo, but your email right here. And uh, I can go through those items, some of them, um, Cliff and I talked this afternoon, some of them are things that are kind of already in. Place, um, or already going to be worked on, but they're just not implemented at the moment, and um. One of them was, sorry, thought I had it right here at the top.
You want me to mention them, Clay, or?
Yeah, you, if you've got them at the top of your head, yeah, no, it's waiting on me.
You know what? Cliff, I don't want you to read that whole list because it's kind of a compilation of things that we've all talked about.
Uh, you know, Madam Mayor, it's 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 different than what you think, I I didn't send that that email to you.
Wait, so if there's things that we didn't talk about that you want to add to the list, great.
Uh, th- thank you, Madam Mayor, and you know, uh, you you and I like, like, to me, when I look at the the goals. Um, I mean, there could be things that uh, we've, we've, you know, okay, here's our wish list. Type goals, or we could just be saying, hey, this in twenty twenty one, here are some things that we hope to to accomplish. And so, um, y- y- you know, and a lot of these goals also came from our advisory groups, and I just want to acknowledge. All the hard work that that they do and and making their recommendations, you know, one of which in in Clay, uh, I hope you can provide. You know, just an update, you know, one of the things that we um, we took that recommendation from Complete Streets and Safety in regards to. The no U-turn on Bayshore and um, you know, having that, that arm extension. Across Bayshore, so people don't make that uh, that very dangerous U-turn, you know, on on in that um. In the intersection, so Clay, we're going to get that, uh, hopefully, fingers crossed, uh, sometime twenty one.
Yeah, it it's uh, it's, it's in the wor- in the works, um, it's funded, it's approved, um, it's just a matter of getting it. Uh, here and installed, so um, I don't have a specific timeframe, um, I know. Uh, Randy and I have talked about this a couple of times, but it shouldn't be too far into the future, um, if if I could just take a second, I know. Colleen brought up, I think, a good point in terms of how we uh, present this material, we we didn't really mention any of your boards and commissions. That who were uh, involved in all this stuff, and I think that's a a good point, I think we'll go back and and um. And probably uh, make that uh, clear that, you know, the proj- projects that they were involved in, um, you know, all the 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 uh. The stuff that Clark, uh, Caroline was showing on the uh, Safe Str- Streets Program was all. Uh, run through the Complete Street, so we'll, we'll make that uh, adjustment and make it clear that uh, you know, make it clear where the boards and commissions were involved in all this stuff. I think it's a a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 in that vein, um, you know, we know that that the folks that volunteer. Uh, for these groups, I mean, they they do it because of love of community, and um. You know, and it's, it's interesting, I mean, I know we all respect the work that they do, but, but I think it would be nice if we had a day of recognition. For them, obviously, right now during the COVID uh, pandemic, yes, is not really appropriate. In in like a gathering sense, but I I think is is a goal, maybe having some kind of recognition day for them. Um, and, you know, I mean, I I guess we could do it online, uh, but, you know, maybe it later in the summer. Um, things might be good enough to do a social distancing thing at our new library if if it's open. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to put that out there to to our our council members and see if that is um, something. A goal that that we should do to, you know, honor our our advisory group, um, who volunteer for us. You guys don't have to say anything if you don't want, I mean, we, I'm just putting it out there, um, you know, a- another thing that that's that's really exciting about. Twenty twenty one is the Crocker Park um, uh, Trail Master Plan. And so, uh, I I don't know, I think you went to the last meeting, but it was a great meeting and uh, excellent public input. Um, open space and and the planning, I mean, the Park and Rec Department are do, or Commission are doing a great job, you know, working together. Uh, with uh, our Park and Rec staff, um, to solicit that community input, um, you know, we did get that money. To do the um, to repurpose the trail with the the compressed granite, and so, um, I I I. I think those funds are now available, is is that true, Clay or Randy, maybe you can uh, provide some input on that, or or could we see something?
For a second, Cliff.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to keep this as a thirty thousand feet overview, um.
I I I don't see what's wrong with that, Madam Mayor, I'm just asking that, you know, I mean, these are, these are important things in our community, wh- what's what's wrong with that? Thank you, I mean, so Clay, do you have uh, any input on that?
I I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So the um, you know, the repurposing of the Crocker Park Trail, I know we have, we got that grant funding.
Oh, the grant funding.
Waiting for it, so, or, you know, is that something that could happen in twenty twenty one, or is that perhaps in twenty twenty two?
That's, that's probably a twenty twenty two, um, the funding on that is, that kind came through a a regional agency. Um, and and all the get back to your previous question on the uh, arm on the Bayshore for the signal, uh, that should uh. Be fairly soon now, because we did get uh, uh, quotes from a contractor this week on that, so we should be ready to. Get that implemented pretty quickly.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, that that that'll be it, thanks.
Okay, um, the under item C, council goal setting, are there any other comments we should be? Bringing forward right now? Tom, did we miss something?
We, we do need to take uh, public comment, we're a little longer than that, so please, be sure to take that.
Okay. Um, don't have it on my list, so um, Ingrid, is there any public comment? On anything that we have said so far?
Ingrid, I cut somebody off, um, to so Clay can finish, that's what I'm referring to.
Oh, sorry.
We have um, Linda Detmer, who has raised her hand for public comment.
Linda. I see an L.
Hello.
Hi.
Is this the appropriate time for public comment?
I guess so, this is all new, and I I do apologize if we have made some errors, this is a, a new format, so.
Understandable.
Option to go, Linda, tomorrow morning, there'll be a bullhorn in front of City Hall.
I can do that. I want to thank Clay and Cliff and Colleen for acknowledging Complete Streets, and um, it's really important to me. I have been a part of that committee for about six years now, and um, I love it. And I want to see us retain members, there was actually several months where we couldn't get a quorum together. To move forward on any of the work that we did, which I consider very important work. And I also recall initially when I became a part of the committee, wondering if we were not just. A committee in name, um, in order to sign for grants, and. I decided to stick with it anyway, although at the time I felt very disappointed because. This committee feels like the foster child of all the committees and uh, commissions. Um, we've done an awful lot of work, and I noticed that on the agenda, we were not acknowledged at all, we were not listed. Uh, to help with uh, the Sierra Point Project or the Baylands Project, that was an afterthought. Um, Public Works has taken the majority of the credit for hours and hours and hours of work done by this committee. That I love, and right now, we have some brilliant people on our committee, my. Main objective is not to gain any acknowledgement of myself, but to retain the talent that we have right now. It's incredible, and I would really like to see Complete Streets treated like a a real committee. And that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Madam, I, if if.
No, 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 I actually, I I would like to speak first here, right, so Linda. You, uh, you can hear me, right? Yeah, okay, so I have honored the Complete Streets Safety Committee. For a long time, and I find it one of the most important local things that we can do. Um, I've been working on it, I I don't think we're winning this year, but I don't think we're winning this year for for. Reasons that are not because people are not um, honoring the Complete Streets Safety Committee. Um, I I think there's just been so many other things going on, but um. The uh, rubric that shows that we want uh, complete streets. On every other major committee is is in the works, and if you could just be patient, I'm really sorry. You feel this way, and there was a a mistake and a couple of pieces of information that came out, but you have my one hundred percent support. And I think that um, Complete Streets is one of the most important things that we have locally, so. Um, can you take that to heart?
I can, Karen, and thank you very much, and just so you know, uh, committee members have been out. Even during COVID, doing a parking survey and looking at bioswales and. Um, doing our best, and it it just, I've brought it up a couple of times in committee that, you know. Uh, Open Space and Ecology gets to do a presentation, and again, going back to my main point is retention. When people are acknowledged. They want to stay, and we are losing people left and right, applying for other commissions and council positions and whatever. And I'm just at the point where if we're not needed, if all we are is a name to get grants, I don't want to do this anymore.
No, you're needed, uh, um, let let me, let me let the other council members speak, please.
Thank you.
Madison.
Um, I'm so sorry that, that you feel that way, Linda, I think that one of maybe the places that we could start is calling a meeting. Between your council liaisons and um, your committee, I know that there were some concerns in the past. And we had a meeting, but this was probably like three or four years ago, and uh, um. We should really be meeting fairly regularly, at least, at least annually with your uh, council liaisons. And I think that that's a really great opportunity for us to have one-on-one time with you, for you to um. Talk to us about what you're working on and maybe some challenges that you're having, and for us to, you know, figure out. Like the best ways that we can support you and um, you know, what recognition looks like to you. And so I think that might be the best forum to do that, and and to just make that commitment that we do that regularly. So that you have that time to to just, you know, communicate these things that are going on instead of. Letting them bubble up and then people are getting upset or people are leaving, and maybe there's just things that we just don't know, you know? So that's where I would suggest we start first.
Thank you, anybody else want to comment here, Cliff?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, yeah, sorry, uh, Linda, that you're feeling that way, and I I just wanted to echo what the mayor had said. Um, that you guys are very, very important, and you do play a vital role in helping the council. Um, you with your recommendations on how we, we navigate. In our community, and and there's some just wonderful, wonderful examples in our town that um. You know, those things have happened because of the efforts that you and and your colleagues have have put in, um, so. Uh, one of the things that we did talk about, I think was at our last meeting, and and, I mean, Clay and council. Excuse me if I, if I, if I didn't hear that correct, but uh, when we were looking at um. Getting uh, advisory group representation for Sierra Point for choosing a uh. You know, a consultant, we were looking at all of the advisory groups, not just Park and Rec and and OSEC, but also Complete Streets. Yeah, it's right, so um, yeah, so I mean.
In the agenda, unfortunately.
And I I, I, you know, sorry that that was not in there, but I I'm sure staff will be reaching out to your body to ask. You know, for someone to um, to, you know, volunteer and and be a part of that, because it, you know, he. You can't create a master park, uh, uh, you know, a master park plan, well, you know, without having uh. Complete Streets, you know, be in the mix, so thank you for your work.
Any other comments? Colleen.
I think we could all do a better job on the council of finding different projects for Complete Streets to do. I think they're underutilized in many ways, they've created a lot of their own projects, but. Uh, when we talk even about connectivity with the ridge, I don't know that we've ever examined how to make people on the ridge connect more. And Complete Streets isn't just about traffic, it's also about creating walkable communities and community spaces. And um, biking and a lot of landscape aspect, so I think we need to take a hard look at some other projects. That um, they certainly are more than capable of doing, and and I don't know that that's been done for a long time.
Probably not, um. Anybody else?
So Karen, um, thank you, I just want to echo, you know, a lot of what has been said by the other council members that. Um, it's very important to recognize members of the different um, committees and commissions. And certainly Complete Streets has been overlooked in some of the accolades and what's been done. Um, or at least their names haven't been put out there, um, but they do play an important role and something that. The city really needs, and we will be looking to them for direction on projects.
Absolutely.
But thank you.
All right, thanks, so I I did give direction to staff earlier that um. That Complete Streets needed to be added to our um, table um, for. Looking at what we're doing moving forward, so and I know that has been changed, um, Ingrid, do we have any? Changed, um, that we can show people now?
Claire, are you ready to do the next?
Yeah, if we're ready.
Well, probably a good time to move forward. If those changes would be made, I would welcome them.
Yeah, we'll make sure they are.
Right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Linda.
So the next item is the Baylands development. The council had a conversation about this a couple of weeks ago. So this is a little bit of a follow-up to that. This is coming from your committee, Baylands Subcommittee members, which are council members, Lance and Mayor Cunningham. And their idea is to enlarge the committee so that it is the two council members, one member of the Planning Commission, one member of Parks and Rec, one member of OSEC, Public Arts Commission, and then also one member of the Complete Streets Committee. And I apologize, we didn't have that on there. So I will take the fall on that one. The idea is that this committee will be meeting approximately once a month with the applicant prior to their submitting a specific plan. So this probably will be anywhere from four to six months would be the guess. Could be longer, it's kind of hard to say for sure. But would review kind of status with the developer, make suggestions in terms of material and information that they need to bring forward. For example, we already requested the developer develop a 3D model so that we have a better kind of spatial sense of what they're looking at on the project site. They're going to probably have that ready for the council and for the Subcommittee in March. And also to help kind of hone down some of the kind of key questions around some of these areas. At the last meeting that the council had this discussion, you had, I think, made it very clear that policy direction to the developer needed to come back to the full council for the full council to have some discussion about that. And that you also wanted to have, make sure that you had a robust public input process. And that's part of the thinking behind having each of the members of the various committees come in and participate in these Subcommittee meetings. Now, the one thing I want to make clear, so that there's no confusion on, is that at a later point in the process, you'll probably be asking each one of your Subcommittee's to review certain aspects of the development. You'll probably be asking them to review specific plan as well as the environmental SEQA documents. This does not preclude that. This is in addition to that. And that's work that their entire committees would do. This would just simply be a member of their committees participating in this process. And again, we anticipate this going on for the next few months, kind of pre-application. Once we get an application in, you know, we will certainly have been starting the SEQA process and then ultimately to the Planning Commission. So I don't see this Subcommittee continuing on after that point, except if there's some other mission for it to do some, you know, certainly we'll evaluate it at that point in time. But for right now, the whole point of this is just to help kind of understand what the developers looking at, kind of ask some questions, get a wide diversity of people involved in the process. And hopefully that will strengthen their application and provide kind of an additional layer of public review on what's taking place. With that, I think Councilmember Lance and Mayor Cunningham were involved in the development of this. So I'll let them make any additional comments if they'd like.
Can go back to just, all right, Cliff, go ahead.
All right, well, yeah, you know, it was great getting your feedback, you know, at the last meeting. And I know, Colleen, you really wanted to have, you know.
Who is yours? Is that me? Is that staff?
No, the council at our last meeting, just the feedback that we got from the council.
Okay, you said your, so just.
Oh, that's what I meant, I'm talking to the council, right? So, yeah, so the council, I'm sorry, I didn't say council feedback. I apologize, Madam Mayor. So. Yeah, no, for sure, yeah, no council feedback, right? And so, you know, we, you know, the mayor and I, you know, took that feedback to heart and tried to, you know, come up with a game plan so that we, as a council, could have more input together and, you know, and giving that feedback to the developer as they're in that process of creating the specific plan, rather than, you know, just getting the specific plan cold, right? Without really direction from us. And then, you know, that's always such an uphill, you know, battle sometimes when there isn't that involvement. And then, you know, Madison, you know, you talked about, you know, that you really wanted that public input. And, you know, the folks that sit on these advisory groups, I mean, they're the members of the public that get even more involved than the regular public members. And so it just seemed appropriate to bring in their expertise and that additional public input that is really valuable in our decision-making process. So, yeah, hopefully you guys are cool with adding these additional members to the Baylands Committee.
Comments?
So I just, I'm just wanting to make sure that when the, when this Baylands Committee is meeting with the developer, they're making some suggestions on what would make the development better for the city and for the residents. But they're not making any promises that of items that will be or won't be approved until it gets reviewed at the entire city council level. That's correct.
I think that's a good description of it. I mean, and be clear that, you know, that the committee's not there to negotiate with the developer. It's just there to receive information, provide some observations. And getting back to the 3D diagram, I think that was a really good idea that came out of the committee to, you know, to understand the project better. And I think, you know, I could see a lot of that kind of input to the developer that will help kind of, you know, facilitate the process. But all policy decisions, all policy directions, that will come from the full city council.
Great, thank you.
Madison, Colleen?
I'm just trying to figure out what else we have to talk about. Like, I thought we went over the list. Everyone's good with the list.
Okay, just want to make sure we're good with the list.
I'm good with the list.
Okay, that's why I was asking the question. All right, we're good. No more questions. All right, so moving forward, item four, Mayor and Council Matters. Item D, provide comment direction to PCE Board representative on proposal to support legislation to allow greater flexibility for utility user taxes. It's time for point.
This item was brought forward to you by your PCE Council Board Member signee, Colleen Mackin. So I'm going to let Colleen kind of walk you through what the issue is and what direction she would like from the council.
Colleen, please, please let us know how you feel about this, please.
Okay, well, first of all, I'll say that mostly ministerial things I wouldn't bring back to you, but I felt this was something I didn't want to make a decision without input and some sort of consensus. So there was a Peninsula Clean Energy Board Member under the intro guise was that he said COVID had made a hardship on a lot of cities in terms of revenues, and this was a way that cities could raise revenues. And the idea was that we would potentially have a gas tax. And some cities are already doing gas and electric taxes through PG&E, the bills. But as it is now, PG&E cannot separate gas and electric taxes. Now, why just a gas tax? Well, Peninsula Clean Energy, renewables, climate change, there's a push to go all-electric, and so taxing gas, the theory is to reduce gas appliances, heaters, go more towards all-electric homes. So this board member felt this was a way to do it and raise revenues. Doesn't mean every city has to do a tax. It just would avail it because part of this would never take place unless we had a mandate from the state forcing Pacific Gas and Electric to change their billing software. Because right now, they can't just raise a gas tax on a bill. So some cities had signed on to this, mostly Mountain View and Gilroy. I'm trying to think of where else, Los Altos. But Josh Becker was contacted by the same board member. And Josh said, well, I don't want to take this to the state legislature unless there's a consensus that cities really want to do this. My thoughts on this were that maybe kind of an interesting idea and really bad timing. We have a recession, we have some people out of work, we have people trying to survive, pay their bills. Realistically, a 5% increase, they estimate as a gas increase on the bill of about $2.75, but that's kind of an average at 5%. And the range of the tax is estimated to be anywhere from 5% to 15% for some cities. And on top of that, we have renters who have no control over the utilities in their dwellings. So what would a landlord do with this? You think a landlord's going to suddenly say, well, I'm going to change all your heating and your stove and everything over to electricity? I doubt it. So I think we're putting a hardship potentially on renters that they can ill afford right now, and they have very little say in it. So why am I bringing it to you? I could easily just say, well, we're not going to sign the petition. But I also felt we might want to consider something more proactive, which would be either to write to the board or to Josh Becker or both, and simply express the counterpoint view. Because it's kind of a spiral of silence. If people sign on and no one speaks up, why this is a bad idea? So I really wanted to hear all of your thoughts.
Well, I really feel aligned with you because, you know, I think about so many renters, like all my friends who rent, we live in old buildings, the gas, heating and gas appliances. And so, and that, these are the smallest, cheapest, most affordable units typically that haven't been, you know, newly updated. And you got these old, you know, you have a lot of gas appliances. And these are the people in these types of units are the people who can least afford for, at least least afford, you know, increase in their utility bill, especially right now. So from my perspective, I say no.
Terry.
So.
Cliff, I'm not putting you at the end, I'm going across the board, okay? Terry.
So Colleen, is it your understanding that if this were to go through and it would be system-wide for PG&E that they would have to adjust their billing structure for all the cities? And that cost would only be passed on to cities that implemented tax? Or it would be implemented into their rate flow-through transmission or billing charges?
Okay, really good question. The only way the tax would be implemented is if a city decided they wanted to levy the tax. Brisbane, for instance, could say, we're going to do a 5% gas tax. Colma could say, we want 20%. South City could say, we want 10%. Someone else might say, we're not going to do a tax at all. Everyone has the ability to either do the tax, whatever amount, or no tax. But what this is going to require, and I can read this to you, the software modifications would have to be met by March 1st, 2022. And the amount included in the rate base would be the lesser of actual project costs to redo the software, or $800,000. That's PG&E. So everybody, whether they do the tax or not, is authorizing PG&E probably to pass that amount along to convert all of their software.
And probably, I can't imagine they could convert all their software for that amount of money, but who knows?
The other part, if I can just mention as well, so if you're a renter, and let's say you have a landlord that goes, oh, I pay the gas and electric, which might be unusual. They might say, I'm going to start converting everything. I'm going to change the heater, the water heater, the stove. They also, in a lot of places without rent control, will just simply pass this on to their tenants. And we're at a time where screaming about affordable housing. And I just think that this is kind of a great idea. We're thinking, let's try to get off carbon. But people are doing that slowly on their own. The other thing is Peninsula Clean Energy has these enormous rebates right now that they're offering for converting your water heater or your furnace. But if someone has one that's still usable, my guess is they're not going to get rid of it until it's time, myself included, where we say, well, you know, when the water heater's time to go, it's time to convert to electric. And that is a non-punitive way. And the upside is with all these rebates being offered, it's not punitive. I think this tax is a little bit punitive.
Thanks, Colleen. Cliff?
Yeah, I totally agree 100% with where you're going, Colleen. And you, Madison, too. I'm glad you brought up, you know, how that tax would disproportionately affect ill-lower income folks. So, you know, they don't have choices, you know, many times. So eventually, it's going to get phased out. And we're moving in that direction, and not like a slow way, but we're moving at a pretty good, at a pretty good pace. So I would not be in favor of doing that tax.
Okay, so here's the question for all of us. So we are one of the cities that are the most far ahead in the green thing. We've won so many awards, et cetera. How do we deal with this? So before you answer, I don't want to put any taxes on any of our renters either right now. I mean, that's just absurd at this time. But, you know, looking at the fact that, you know, Brisbane is one of the most advanced cities relative to greening, how do we? Give me a second, you guys, I'm tired. How do we compose the objection to making this happen at this time? Because, yeah, I'm sure we all, you know, want the green things to happen as fast as possible, but not right now. So did that make sense? It's trying to make sense.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. You're trying to square it up, right? If we have a kind of this environmental, you know, you know, like eco-friendly, you know, kind of persona of who we are, and then we're not. you know, in, like, eco-friendly, you know, kind of persona of who we are, and then we're not you know, moving forward with this tax that may accelerate the, the, you know, of not using, you know, natural gas. You know, I, I don't think the tax is really gonna make that much of a difference, and, and, and and, correct me if I'm wrong, Colleen, but it sounds like in this document, it, it's, it's kinda like saying, "Hey, this is a way for cities to make some additional money." Like, you know what, come on, you know what, that's, that's, that should not be the reason.
Yeah, let, let Colleen respond to that, that would be great.
Ironically, Cliff, that's exactly how this board member introduced it. Is he said, "You know, COVID has really, a lot of cities have taken a hit, and here's a chance you can make up some revenues." And I thought, "Whoa, wait a minute, what are we doing here?" And I, I think it had some people stunned a little bit, because it, it, it's a bit complicated, at first you go, "Oh, great, you know, we're, we're gonna try to promote all-electric" until you start thinking about it, and you go, "Well, you know, i- is this really the, the way?" W- w- we're talking about essential services when you're talking about heat, hot water, and cooking. And why would you hit essential services when w- we're trying to get legislation to help people during COVID who are unemployed and can't pay their rent? And, and homeowners with mortgages who can't pay mortgages, people unemployed, why would we hit them right now with this?
Okay, so, so, looks like we're kind of fermenting into a really good position. But Terry, Madison need to come into this too, because I think we can, I think our city, who has got platinum awards for so many things, can probably come up with some really good
Language. We need good language, and I think that
Whatever it is, go.
I think being a, I, I, I don't think that we should sign on as a city to implementing this. And I think that if we state that the, you know, we have gone to, you know, all-new electric construction, and, you know, to, that that is the way to limit gas usage. You know, natural gas is still in our communities, it still needs to be serviced. It may get to where it's, you know, unfeasible for whatever regulations, but, you know, it, it needs, it's still there, and I don't think we should penalize, so if we state in our letter that we are proactively against this because we feel that this can be addressed through planning and through, um, non-punitive methods of getting people off fossil fuels, I think that's a way to do it without sounding like we're reversing course on being a green community.
Well, yeah, a- and, and our poorer communities, for goodness sake.
Yeah, that's what you have to say, you have to say that Brisbane has and always will be committed to, you know, to green initiatives, to being sustainable, and to renewable energy, but we feel that this tax won't, will hurt the poorest in our communities, who really have no ability to change behavior anyway, they're just gonna end up, like, I, I can't go and replace my heater and go and replace my stove, I'm a renter, I can't do that. So, it's not really going to move the needle anywhere, it's just going to punish the people, why don't we, it's better to incentivize, like, my, my apartment complex to put in a place where we can charge our vehicles and do positive initiatives in that way. And as a city, you know, we're doing okay financially, so this is not, I don't think it's gonna generate that much money for us to implement something like that, so I think you just play out all those things.
So, so can I, can I just, just oh, can I just jump in here for a second and say, "Listen to what we were all saying, and is there something that we as a community can, outside of this little gathering tonight, can come together and talk about this, because it was amazing information that, that came forth? But, um, I, I'm, I can't sign on to this, as much as I'm a green person, just put solar on my roof, blah, 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 but I can't, um, I cannot tolerate the idea that we're gonna, um, hurt the people in our communities that can least afford to, to bear the burden, no.
Well, what I think that, that staff or Colleen is looking for now is direction, and I think she can work with staff and perhaps legal or with, um, you know, on, on getting the wording for the letter. Because it needs to go out pretty quick, we're not gonna hash it out, the language tonight. But I think she's looking for direction, and staff can work with her to, um, come up with something through um, our sustainable, um, coordinator, um, and get some language that isn't going to offend, but makes it clear why we are not promoting this.
Where we're at, for sure, thank you.
Is that something, Clay, that we can give direction?
Yeah, for, for sure, that, that works from our end, yeah.
Does that sound legally and, and ethically and morally acceptable to everybody right here?
Yes.
One thing that you've not given me feedback on is there doesn't seem to be a deadline on this petition, but as we see from the people who've signed on other than one person from Gilroy, it's mostly affluent communities, so they may believe $3 on my bill isn't gonna make it or break it for me, sure, let's go. But if this petition lingers for another month or so, which I don't know how long they'll keep it open, maybe until they feel they, they have enough names, is this letter to go to the Peninsula Clean Energy Board because they may close the petition, in which case that petition will go right to Josh Becker? Or do we send a letter to the board and Josh Becker? Or do we send a letter directly to Josh Becker, because he's the one that's going to get the petition?
Okay, question to Tom.
Um, this is a statement of support or lack of support for a new, uh, effectively, this will be a state policy, also might be seen as a bankruptcy court policy, I don't know if the final proceeding on PG&E is closed, I haven't looked in at least 90 days. Um, so, timing is only, uh, relevant, relevant if you're trying to advance a state policy this year, then you're supposed to meet a deadline of, um, the 19th. 19 through 20th, whatever the Friday.
We're not, we're not hearing you clearly, Tom, could you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, the policy deadline for legislation, which I think is what is essentially being called for, is the, uh, third Friday this month, I believe it's the 19th. Uh, to have something written, to be ready to go, et cetera, with Senator Becker's, um, support, this would have to be done very quickly, certainly no later than next week. That's if you want something, that's not what I'm hearing from the council. If you don't want something, then you can make a statement as you've, um, outlined. You can be silent for the moment and see if the bill is actually introduced. You can send a, a letter like you outlined just to the senator, which I think is what's being discussed. All of that's perfectly legal, and the only deadline you have to be concerned with is if you were actually advancing a policy uh, through the legislature. I, I just don't know, and Colleen may know off the top of his head, or Stuart. Um, Colleen, I know the deal was struck on PG&E, do you know if the hearing, the process is closed?
I believe it is.
That's, I thought.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's another thing that could be impacted, but I don't think Senator Becker is gonna get in the middle of a, uh, a bankruptcy proceeding, so, I think you're talking about the state legislature and sending a letter of what you believe is the right way to go to Senator Becker, as you, you're Senator, and you, you may wanna send it to Assemblyman Bublins as well.
I, I think that would be our best course of action, but, you know, I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I'm here for you guys to let me know how you feel about this, because I think it's really important that we're prudent and we're very conservative in our actions, so as not to incite a lawsuit of any description moving forward, so I think, um, you know, I've said it, and I wanna say it again, keeping us as a low profile is, from my perspective, our best move forward, but I'm one vote, that's it. So, you guys, let me know.
If I may, Madam Mayor? I don't, I would not want the council to think there's a lawsuit risk here, I, I don't know, uh, how that would be for endorsing this policy, or objecting to the policy, or simply just making a statement of principle, which is what I heard outlined. So, I don't think you have to worry about any lawsuit, I do think, uh, as some of you know individually from, um, us talking over the years, um, legislators are very, very busy, and, uh, when you ask them something as a city, you want to ask them something that the city cares about and that you feel strongly about. Otherwise, uh, providing information is great, because they do want that input, they wanna know what the constituents are thinking, and particularly the elected officials in a, in a state like Brisbane where they're close to their constituents. Um, but they're not offended by it, they're not bothered by it at all, so there's no legal risk, you're not gonna offend Senator Becker. Um, you're certainly not gonna offend, uh, Pro Tem, not Pro Tem, I'm sorry, Speaker of Pro Tem, um, Mullins, but, uh, the question simply is, is this a big enough priority that, um, you wanna draw attention to it? And that's really, that's, that's a sense of, of the five of you, whatever you agree.
I think that, like, we've given Colleen direction, she can take it back to the meeting. This might not end up being something like, the feedback at PC might be, you know, a clearly so many cities don't wanna, don't wanna pursue this, and it dies there. So, I think that we might be doing, like, too much right now, and just like let Colleen go to the meetings, feel it out, make her position known. I, I assume there's gonna be a ton of discussion, then if we feel like this is moving forward, then at that point, we can figure out, like, what strategy we wanna have.
If I may, I, I don't know that this is going to come back again, Madison, that's my concern. Since this, this is not, this is not being submitted as a, as a, uh, motion for the, the whole PCE board to get behind, it, it's more or less a, a consensus that this one person wants to provide Josh Becker. And when it got brought up at the meeting, he made his spiel, and that was it, there were no comments, we went right past it. Because it's one person's initiative. So, my concern was, if, if we do not sign on it, there's a, a silence. And do we want to at least just say that, that it's a good intention, but that it has some ramifications perhaps were never considered? And that there are some better incentives to get people to move on to electric? Very simple. And I don't think I'll have an opportunity at an, at another board meeting to make that, that point, because I don't think it's coming back on our agenda again.
Okay, so.
You have to not sign on. I don't think we have to, like, explain it, I don't know.
So, Tom, if, for, what it says in this, um, letter is that they would need to, um, move it forward in this legislative season, would you get wind of that if they were trying to do that?
Yeah, I, we would certainly know that the, we would know by March at the latest. Uh, and I should, if I may, uh, Councilmember O'Connell, um, thank God for the internet, so the proceeding on, uh, PUC closed out the entire realm. The Court had acted, but the PUC did close out the proceeding on PG&E in October 26, 2020, so this is purely a state legislative um, point at the moment, and, uh, yes, Mayor, uh, former Mayor O'Connell, we would get wind of it. Um, and I must say that utility user taxes are um, hotly contested, very controversial, because they have to be very carefully worded. And not only will we hear a word of it, but if it has any chance of moving forward, there'll be people coming out of the woodwork, uh, with views on it, different views on it. Positive and negative, different ideas, things like that, and this is that.
So, it, it would not be an easy pass through the legislation?
No.
So, we have time, if we just ignore this and stay silent, we would have time to weigh in or lobby one way or another at a later date.
Yes, and if, if anybody tried to impose this on PG&E, it would immediately be a question of what about the other IOUs, the investor-owned utilities like SDG&E and Edison? Then the next question would be, well, what about the municipals like, uh, SMOID and, and LIDWP? This won't be quite a debate, uh, so yes, you will have plenty of opportunity to win.
And Howard Jarvis and all those other people would get involved and everybody, okay?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Any other comments?
So, have we given Colleen direction enough for her?
Colleen, good. We're not going to sign the petition in favor, and we're going to just sit on it and wait for further word.
Are you comfortable with that?
Sure. That's, that's the input I wanted.
Cliff, your finger is up your nose, are you okay?
No, it's on my face, uh, Madam Mayor, so, sorry about that, thank you for, uh, calling that out. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it, it's not really Colleen's decision, it's our decision, do we wanna sign the petition or not, right?
I wanna make sure everybody's, everybody's cool. Madison, any other comments? Uh, okay, all right, so, looks like we've we know where we're going. Okay, so, letting, moving on to item four, mayor and council matter, matters. Item D, provide comment and direction to PCE board representatives on proposal to support legislative, uh, legislation to allow greater flexibility for utility users' taxes. I think we kind of got there.
Say that.
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
All right, we're done, all right, um, item five, public comment. Ingrid?
There are no members of the public wishing to make a public comment.
Before we adjourn, were there any other comments? Colleen?
Do you want a subcommittee report? I can give you a quick, there is one item of Peninsula Clean Energy that, that's a really good thing.
I think we need to have that on February 18th.
Okay, I'll save it.
I'll save it, because that's when all right, nothing else? Thank you, everybody can go to bed, adjournment to the irregular, regular city council meeting of February 18th. Thanks, everybody, good night.
Thank you, good night.